I call this meeting to order. By rule call, show that all council members are present except Mayor Leach and Council Member Hatch, who have been excused. We welcome those in attendance tonight and those watching on Sholo TV or an electronic device. Tonight, Dallin Adams will give the invocation, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Jayden Wade. Those of you who would like to join, please stand.
Dear the Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity that we have gotten to be able to come to City Hall and do this meeting and the opportunity that we get to learn about this city and what they do to help their citizens and please bless that this meeting will go well and say his things in the name of Jesus Christ and man.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, where the nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jayden. Our next item is called to the public. I'll turn the time over to City Attorney, Ms. Lotencio.
Thank you. Any citizens desiring to speak on a matter that is within the jurisdiction of the City Council may do so at this time. Comments may be limited to three minutes per person and shall be addressed to the City Council as a whole and not to any individual member. Issues raised shall be limited to those within the jurisdiction of City Council. Pursuant to the Arizona Open Meeting Law, the City Council cannot discuss or act on items presented at this time. At the conclusion of the call of the public, individual City Council members may respond to criticism made by those that have spoken, ask staff to review a matter, and ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. I have three requests, the first one being Laura Rinn. Just a reminder, we have three minutes per speaker.
Good evening, Council, and thank you for listening to me. We have noticed quite a number of illegal aliens in our town, and I don't know what you plan on doing about that, but I have a suggestion that any business operating in the city of Sholo caught facilitating the criminal invasion of our country should have their business license revoked immediately. And thank you for your time.
Next, I have Karen Slaton.
It's very hard to hear back there, so I'm going to speak up, and I hope you do the same. I was just talking with Mr. Seymour, and I said, "We can't hear. Maybe there's something you can do about that." Okay? Thank you. I'm Karen Slaton, co-owner of the Trump Store with my husband Steve Slaton, for nine years here in Sholo on the Deuce de Clubs. Our subject tonight is illegal immigrants here in Sholo, Navajo County, Apache County, and Hila County. For the past two and a half years, we have all witnessed the large white buses and vans with blacked-out windows driving through Sholo, Pinetop, and Springerville. Because we knew the NGOs were loading illegals up on the border and spreading them throughout our state and dropping them off in small towns, we alerted Sheriff Klaus, Supervisor Seymour, and the local police department. When the buses were spotted in Springerville, the council and mayor were alerted. They first denied that our governor, Katie Hobbs, had allocated that the dome in Springerville would be an ideal spot to place illegals. The community rose up and objected. The mayor and council advised Hobbs that they would not be welcome in Springerville. Last Saturday, a large group of illegals, they all dressed alike in black with hoodies and backpacks and walk in military-style lines, were spotted in Sholo on the Deuce de Clubs across the street from our store, witnessed by ourselves and dozens of others. We took appropriate action and called the Sholo Police Department and Sheriff Klaus to report this and advised others who witnessed the group to do the same. Sheriff Klaus, who was on a hunting trip, called my husband back, was concerned and said he would check this out again. The 21 million illegals or so that Joe Biden has let into our country are ruining our towns, our schools, our businesses, violent gangs taking over Aurora, Colorado, 20,000 Haitians dropped off in Springfield, Ohio, literally eating our domestic animals, cats and ducks, tent cities all over Tucson and Phoenix, and violating our young girls by murdering and raping the innocent who never had a chance. We refuse to let this town turn into a Springfield, Ohio.
Thank you, Ms. Slaton. Your time's up.
You're welcome. I ask that the council step up, be aware of these things, and do something to protect the city of Sholo. Thank you.
Steve Slaton?
Good evening, folks. I don't know how properly to address you since you got these young folks in here. I think that's probably something good, a learning experience for you. I think that's really unique. A learning experience is sort of my wife and what's been going on. Now, hopefully, tonight, we're going to have a great victory, but the thing is, we won't know what we really do about this on the federal level for two and a half months. And we really urge the City Council, get together with the police chief and Sheriff Klaus, and come up with a plan to do something because here's a pretty young girl here. It'd be a shame if she gets kidnapped and raped and killed. And if this happens and continues on, who's going to be responsible for it? The government. The government's number-one job, responsibility, is to protect the citizens. You've been given the consent to govern, so we're asking for you to govern and do something about it. And don't worry about federal laws, state laws. Your responsibility is to us, the citizens of Sholo. And it'll be very tragic to see one of our pretty and bright and handsome young men and girls, something happens to them, and they'll be on your shoulders. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Seeing no one else move forward, we close call to the public and move to special events. I will now turn the time over to Mrs. Kakavas.
The first item on special events is recognition of our past Council member, Mike Alsop. For those of you that know Mike, he cares deeply about our community, and he's volunteered to help the community in many, many ways. During Mike's time on the Sholo City Council, the City Council approved the wastewater treatment plant, the construction of a new library and council chambers, a new police and dispatch building, the inclusive playground in Splash Pad, and the purchase and development of the Sholo Meadow property, just to name a few. He was also instrumental in the foundation of Student Government Day, which just so happens to be today, where we have these wonderful young people today. Mike, we want you to know that the City Council appreciates you. We would like to present you with a token of gratitude. It is a replica of our bronze card game monument. We hope that every time you look at it, you feel proud of your accomplishments as a Council member of the city of Sholo. The inscription on the plaque says, "Michael A. Alsop. In recognition of your many years of dedicated service and hard work to make Sholo better, a sincere thank you from the City of Sholo elected officials and staff. We wish you well in your future endeavors. You served on the Planning and Zoning Commission from January 2006 to December 2009, the City Council from October 2009 to March 2024, and as the Vice Mayor from December 2018 to December 2020." So, Council, if you would join me below and help me present this to Mike, I would appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, thank you, City of Sholo, and Council, and members. It's been a long, a lot of years, and in some ways, it's hard to give it up, but in some ways, it's really good to give it up. Especially, I want to give first gratitude to my wife for all the years of doing community service. We added it up the other day, and it's like 35 years of community service I put into City of Sholo, firefighting, EMT, Fire Board, and the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council. And if I'm not mistaken, and I know Rachel will correct me, I believe this is the 13th or 14th year for the youth. I think it was two, I think I started in 2010. So, thank you, youth. I started with Mr. Whipple. He was the teacher, and we got together with Rick Fornol, and we started this up. And it's been a great, great thing for the kids, and it made it exciting to see that the kids are interested in what's going on with the city and also to try to be leaderships in this community. It's been a long time, and I do want to thank each and every one of you for everything you've done. I started off with Rick Fornol, Darrell Seymour, and Mr. Whipple, Gary Whipple. I can't give you enough information about these three men, how they created the city of Sholo, how they kept it alive, how they made it better than what it was, and we pass that on every, every time that another council comes on. Most of the council members here, there's only been one or two that's been here all the time that I've been here. We've got new council members, and it's going to keep on growing and growing, and hopefully, we can just keep on making this a lot better community than what it was. I just remember when, from the very first time, it was people telling me, "You're elected by the people or the people," and that's what I want to keep in my heart. So, thank you, everybody, for everything you've done.
Can I say? Mike, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you for your friendship over the years. We've been friends a long time, and when I first got on Council, I think you were the first one to kind of put your arm around me and kind of help me along and kind of learn how things work, and I want to thank you for everything you've done over the years. I hope if anyone sees Mike around town, they give him a hug or shake his hand and tell him thank you for all his hard work. He really has, he just talked about those three great men. Mike is part of that, and he's done a lot of work for City of Sholo, and he's donated a lot of time, and we're really grateful for all you've, all you've done. And I'm really excited that we did to honor you on this day with student council here, with this being something that you had such a major party in. So, thank you, Mike, for everything and all that you've done.
I will now turn the time over to Ms. Payne.
Good evening, Council. Thank you very much. I'm here before you tonight to celebrate our first Citizens Academy graduates. They're here with us this evening, and earlier this year, at the direction of our city manager, staff was asked to create a Citizens Academy program. They're very popular throughout many cities and towns throughout the entire state and even wider, and the reason is because we get to engage local citizens who have a clear passion for local government but want to learn more how we work on the day-to-day local level. And so, we brought this program together, and for six wonderful weeks, we spent an hour and a half every Thursday with our six graduates, with our directors, with our community partners, and we got to really dig deep into what staff does on a day-to-day level. And I have to say that we have had the most incredible participants in our academy. They have been energetic, engaging, asking fantastic questions, being supportive of staff, and at the conclusion, I heard all six of them praise the city and praise how much they wanted to dive even deeper into giving back and volunteerism and participating. And so, we have them here tonight, and with your permission, then I would ask Vice Mayor to present them with their graduation certificates.
The first one we have is Angie Delisandre.
Thank you for your participation.
The next one is Park Anderson.
Thank you for your participation.
And then we have Doug Roberts. I would invite any of you to come up and say a few words if you'd like to and shake the council's hand.
Yeah, I would just like to say, we moved up from Phoenix in February, and we wanted to learn about the city, and the program was available. We were so grateful, and we learned quite a bit, and as you said, the opportunities to be able to, you know, kind of donate our time and find out where we might fit in, and just the learning opportunity was just incredible. So, I just want to thank you all. An amazing city, Sholo. Thank you very much.
We think so.
Thank you so much for letting us participate in this. Mike and I wanted to move to this area for a long time. I lived up here when I was about this age, not that age, this age. And we finally made it back up here about, I think it was about five and a half years ago or so, and we decided, we live in a small town, we want to know more about a small town, we want to participate in the small town. So, we participated in this. We learned a heck of a lot of stuff that we did not know, and it's very amazing, and we're proud to call Sholo our home.
I want to thank Ms. Payne and the council and management, Morgan. This was a great opportunity for me to learn more about the city. I tried to be involved, and this allowed me to get more information on where we can be involved and learn more about some areas that I wasn't familiar with. I would highly, my understanding is this is going to be offered again in the future. I highly recommend anybody who cares about the city of Sholo or wants to know more about the city of Sholo, come and sit through this. It's very well presented, a lot of information. We had input from every department. We got to spend time in places that, I've been here for 14 years, and even with that, there was a lot of things going on that I was not aware of. So, it was a great program. I encourage everybody to do it, and thank you too for the great job you did running it.
Council, thank you very much, and that's...
I am Sean Anderson. My husband is the one who spoke first. We moved here from Phoenix in February, a very conscious choice, okay? And I was born and raised in a small town, and my family, my, you know, grandfather's chief of police, and so that's where I come from, and then Phoenix is a totally different world, you know, from that. So, we're very excited to be up here, and very fun that I don't know, Sheriff Gray said the first one, right? So, maybe our picture will be in the historical museum, and then when all your children, your small ones, childrens go in, we're like, "We remember that lady from 80 years ago." So, we're very excited, and we're already getting involved in different volunteer organizations right next to, we're right here next to the Sholo Turnover Card. Not just a senior center, right? They're also fund the Fresh Start Program. We helped at the Halloween Party on Thursday, helped with games, and so we're doing all that we can do. So, we really appreciate being here, and we do appreciate the folks that are, you know, very concerned about our safety and everything as well. So, we definitely echo those first comments from the first two, three as well. But so, thank you very much. Very, very much appreciated for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Payne. Thank you. Good job. It was great to be here.
That was really good. Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
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 Good job.
It was great to be here.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys attended?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Glad you were willing to talk.
Good to see you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for getting involved in this.
Thank you.
Good to see you up here.
Thank you, Doug.
Good to see you.
Thanks, John.
Next up, we have a presentation by Sholo High School students who attended the League of Arizona Cities and Towns Annual Conference.
Okay, our presentation is right here, and it's for the League of Cities Conference for 2024. The first thing we'll go over is the parade of flags, and what we'll talk about is representing the city and networking with other council members and students. I thought this part was cool. It was cool to definitely see all the different cities and everything. Something that we all did there was, as every flag would go, we would look to see the age of the city and like when it was established and stuff, and so it was just really cool to see how, like, there are so many different cities that come together and, like, really interested me, and I thought that was cool. And then there was that, like, there was just so many different people there, and they all were doing so many different things, and I don't know, it was just a really, really cool experience, and you want to see all the different cities and people and all that, so.
So, one of the workshops we attended discussed a lot of advocacy and influence, so talking about projects... So, talking about projects, creating projects, but, and then following through with them. Because starting a project and putting it there isn't going to help any of the situations. It also talked a lot about youth involvement in local government and making sure, like, youth are aware of, like, what their town's doing and like all those kinds of things. And like finding causes you care about, making sure you know what matters to you, your values, that kind of thing. We were also able to attend a mayor's council. So, there were mayors from Superior, Mesa, and Tempe. And they talked a lot about increased youth involvement as well. And we got to hear about the projects that they're running in their city and how they're executing that, like, delegation and everything like that. And just like project, proper project fulfillment. So, like delegating tasks and ensuring that a project doesn't just say a project, but it ends up becoming like the full thing.
Yeah, I think one of the, you know, coolest parts about the whole League of Cities experience was getting to interact with other youth from other cities around Arizona. It was really cool to interact with specifically other involved youth and see kind of how they get involved with their city governments. And, and it was really cool to like, kind of realize the effect that youth can have on our cities if we're willing to try. And so, yeah, overall, it was a really positive, cool experience. Yeah. Thank you.
Can we have Ms. O'Connell come up here too? I think she was the, your leader who went and participated in this. If you could come up, I have a quick question for you, if you don't mind. Go ahead and state your name for the record, so.
Caitlin O'Connell. I'm a teacher at the high school and the student council advisor.
So, Ms. O'Connell, you've been doing this for how many years now as the, the advisor for the student government?
This is my third year.
And what do we need to do as a council to make it even better next year for your, for, for the delegate? I don't know if you're going to be the, the academic advisor for a student council next year or whoever that person is. What, what, what can we do so that next year, it's even better than what it was this year? Like, as far as like, are, do we have everything? Has the city provided you and everything that you need as far as making sure that this is successful?
I think so. I think the kids would also like to see more job descriptions when they, before they go out into the city. Because a lot of them, they just see the title and they're like, I don't know what that is. Which, I don't know, maybe that's a good thing because they try something new. But it might help some of those that never get kids that volunteer to want to go to them because they get a little bit more description on it. But it's organized very well. The kids seem to enjoy it. They like missing a day of school, go do some jobs in the city.
Great. And what about with the League Conference? Is there anything, do you have everything you need as far as making that successful? And for the, those who attend the League Conference down in the valley or wherever we have it every other year?
Yeah, that's always great. It's always like going down, staying in a nice hotel, and then getting to meet a bunch of other kids from different cities is always neat. And it's nice to see what other cities do because there's that networking portion that they talked about, so.
All right, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you to Lenora, Dawn, and Jayden for that really neat presentation. Our next item is the consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull an item for discussion? On the consent calendar, we have consideration of purchase of sidewalk cleaning machine, purchase of forklift, acceptance of senior field bleachers, acceptance of East Cooley roadway improvements, acceptance of manhole replacement job order contract, non-commercial ground lease with D Plain LLC, and termination of lease with Will and Sarah Ferguson, and approval of regular council minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
For Councilman Clark, I move to approve the consent calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
I'm seconding the motion for Councilman Whipple.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Motion passes six to zero. Next up, we have new business. The first item under new business is consideration of award of contract for Cholo Lake Campground Restroom. Mr. Austin.
A whole bunch of them, so let me find this one. All right. Evening, all. I don't know how to address everybody, council and kids. The City of Cholo 2024 Budget includes funding for the construction of a new public restroom at the Cholo Lake. This restroom will be located at the Spillway Campground. The work includes, but is not necessarily limited to, the construction of a restroom facility that will include three ADA-accessible restrooms in a single building. There shall be one separate men's restroom with two stalls, one water closet, and one urinal. One separate women's restroom with two water closet stalls, and a family restroom with a single water closet and ADA adult changing station. Staff has solicited bids from contractors to construct the building. The requests for bids were, were based on previous approved plans prepared by city staff. The building will be a duplicate of the recently constructed restrooms at the city campus. City personnel will extend water, sewer, and power utilities to the building location. The project was publicly advertised per statutory requirements, and two bids were received. The bid results are as follows. Contractor LD&amp;B LLC, $138,400. Mills Design Group at $188,600. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for Cholo Lake Campground Restroom, City of Cholo Project Number FM 3125, to LD&amp;B LLC, in the amount of not to exceed $138,400. Any questions?
I have a question. What, what's your timeframe? Are you thinking on that, Rick?
These restrooms usually take two to three months.
Okay.
If you don't have trouble getting material.
Also, thank you to your crew, always doing a good job on the snow.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Is there any other questions for the staff? Do we have a motion?
For Councilman Judd, I move to award the construction contract for Cholo Lake Campground Restroom, City of Cholo Project Number FM 3125, to LD&amp;B LLC, in an amount not to exceed $138,400.
Do we have a second?
I'm seconding the motion for Councilman Adams.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand.
Thank you all.
Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero.
Thanks, Rick. Thanks, Rick.
The next item under new business is consideration of cost-sharing agreement with Cholo Pine Top Woodland Irrigation Company. Ms. Atencio?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, Council, Student Council. The city and the Cholo Pine Top Woodland Irrigation Company share interest in the water and the storage rights at the Cholo Lake and Dam pursuant to water agreement dated June 29, 2005, and amended and restated on June 5, 2012. And the operating and system management agreement dated June 29, 2005, which was also amended and restated on June 5, 2012. Irrigation water stored at the Cholo Lake has historically been and continues to be diverted by the irrigation company via the Cholo Lake Pipeline and the Rainbow Lake Ditch. Improvements are required for the continued releases of stored irrigation water from the Cholo Lake into the Cholo Lake Pipeline and Rainbow Lake Ditch, and for the city to divert water via the Rainbow Lake Ditch to its future water treatment plant. Properly functioning valves are essential for the controlling of the water levels at the lakes. The needed improvements include the construction of a slip line from the pumping facility on the Cholo Lake to the Rainbow Lake Ditch, and the replacement of underwater valves at the Cholo Lake that are in disrepair but are necessary for the diversion of water into the Cholo Lake Pipeline. The parties, that being the city of Cholo as well as the irrigation company, believe that it's in the interest to complete the improvements and share the costs, responsibilities, and rights to the improvements. The city has constructed the slip line from the pumping facility to the Cholo Lake, from the pumping facility on Cholo Lake to the Rainbow Lake Ditch at its own cost, with the expense in exchange for a perpetual right to use a portion of the Rainbow Lake Ditch to divert water for the city's future water treatment plan. The city is willing to pay the upfront cost of an estimated $189,060 for the diving team, replacement valves, and the crane to replace and repair the valves at Cholo Lake. The irrigation company agrees to reimburse the city approximately half the cost at $94,930 at a 0% interest rate over a three-year period, payable in equal installments of $31,510. The first payment is due on the effective date of the cost-sharing agreement and shall be due each year thereafter until paid in full. Staff recommends approval of the cost-sharing agreement with the Cholo Lake, or Cholo Pine Top Woodland Irrigation Company.
Thank you, Ms. Atencio. Are there any questions for staff?
Ms. Atencio, when was the last time that these valves were replaced?
I believe Mr. Austin indicated it was like in the 50s. It was quite some time ago. And they are in a state of disrepair at this point. And it's necessary to be able to replace them to have the lake functioning properly.
Are there any other questions?
So, are these the original valves when the lake was built? I don't want that job.
Do we have a motion?
For Councilman Whipple, I move to approve the cost-sharing agreement with the Cholo Pine Top Woodland Irrigation Company for improvements, including the replacement of underwater valves at Cholo Lake.
Do we have a second?
I'm seconding the motion for Councilman Clark.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero. The next item under new business is consideration of award of contract for replacement of Cholo Lake valves. Mr. Austin.
Good evening, again. Cholo, the, the Cholo Lake, the, the, I'm sorry. The Cholo Dam that was built in 1954 by Phelps Dodge and the tower northwest of the spillway has three valves, two six-inch and one 18-inch. These valves control the flow of Cholo Creek. Over time, these 70-year-old valves have become inoperable, inoperable due to age and use. To safely remove and replace these valves, the flow to the tower must be plugged in an inlet structure that is located 160 feet into the lake. So, staff hired Rubicon Applied Diving Services to investigate the inlet because the asbils that were supplied to the city by Phelps Dodge were hard to read at best. Upon investigation, it was discovered that the asbils were incorrect. And there were modifications made to the inlet that was not reflected in the plans. Staff has been working with Rubicon and decided the best course of action would be to lower the lake to a level that would allow the divers to reach the inlet faster so they can apply a blanking plate and bypass valve to stop the flow of water to the tower, allowing Rubicon to safety, safely replace the three valves. Staff recommends the award of the Cholo Lake Valve Replacement Project FM 3325 be awarded to Rubicon Applied Diving Services in the amount of $166,885 with the associated budget transfers.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Are there any questions for staff?
I have a question. How, how low are they going to be lowering it? What level are they taking it down to?
We're down at, from 70 to 59 feet now, and it's going down fast. The, the divers want to start on the 11th. And we should have the valve, the new valves in by the 18th, 19th, somewhere in there.
And how low will the water level end up going down?
I can't remember what the elevation is, but I think we're about six to eight feet from the tower and the lake now. And that's all the lower we can go.
We get a 70-year guarantee on those valves?
I can't guarantee that one.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Do we have a motion?
For Councilman Adams, I move to award the contract for preparation of intake structure and replacement of the valves in the control vault at Cholo Lake to Rubicon Applied Divers, Inc., in an amount not to exceed $166,885 and authorize the associated budget transfers.
Do we have a second?
I'm seconding the motion for Councilman Judd.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. Any opposed? The motion passes five to zero.
Thank you.
The next item under new business is consideration of ground lease agreement with New Singular Wireless. Ms. Atencio?
Thank you. Due to some circumstances with New Singular Wireless and Verizon on the tower, I'm asking to pull this from the agenda at this point.
Thank you, Ms. Atencio. Next up is summary of current events. Our next agenda item is a summary of current events. Do any council members have anything to report?
I just want to say thank you to this high school and student council. I think this is a great program. I'm so excited about it. We get to do this every year, spend time with them down there in the valley. And this is a good program, and I'm really excited about it. And yeah, I think we should keep it going.
Thank you. We will now turn the time to Vice Mayor. Okay. Sorry about that. We will now turn the time to Vice Mayor Kikavas for her report.
I agree with Councilman Adams that this is a great program. I also want to thank staff for all the hard work they do in putting this program together. It's very beneficial to not only the students in our area, but also our community and for our future leaders. So, I'm just really sorry I missed it this year. I was ill and wasn't able to attend the League of Cities. So, thank you, all of you kids, for joining that program and for all you do in the community and in your high school and being such good representatives of the high school. You put out a good name for all the kids that go there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Kikavas. I will now give a report for Cholo High School and their events. First of all, I just want to give a big recognition to the Cholo City Council. I've been doing this four years now. And every year, I've learned something new about the city. I don't think I've had one bland experience with the city. Last year, me and Lenora got to witness the pool shut down due to the filter blowing up. But we've, I've been doing this four years now, and I've had a great time every year learning about the city and how it operates. And I'm sure other city, other student council members can stay the same. Moving on to Cholo High School events, I want to touch on the Cholo Boys Soccer Team, who recently made it to the semifile, semifinals in the state playoffs. We finished the season with a 15-3 record, which is pretty impressive. And yeah, I, I will now turn the time over to Myla.
I want to do a big recognition for our girls soccer team. We made it to the state game, state final game, both years, last year and this year. Unfortunately, we didn't have the outcome we wanted, but the program is really good and so, yeah.
Congratulations for making it to state twice. Jayden?
Yeah, and we also want to mention, for the first time in Cholo High School history, right? We are an A-label school. I think we've been a... I guess for the last little bit, we've been a B-label school. And there's a lot that goes into the label. I know there's, I, I can't, I can't say everything that like goes into it. But I know our last year's graduating class and now our senior class this year had a big part in it and as well as administration at the school. And so, yeah, it's something really cool, and we're moving forward.
Lenora?
I just wanted to recognize the Cholo High School Advanced Women's Choir and Showbiz, who recently attended a state choir festival and both got superiors and a superior with distinction for both of them, which is the top score that you can get at a state choir festival. So, yeah, the program's really good. We're doing really well.
Congratulations to Sholo Choir. Dawn, do you have anything? That is...
I would also like to recognize the volleyball girls. They are currently in playoffs right now. They are playing their playoff, their first playoff game tonight against Payson. We won. Oh, so we won, so that's really good. Yeah, so now they'll be moving forward. Yeah, so, yeah, so our school's doing great, so.
Thank you to everyone for those reports. City manager, Mr. Brown, will now give his report.
Thank you. It's been great to have the students with us today and we've had a lot of fun. Appreciate them coming and for the school for supporting this program. Just a couple of things to note, we have a celebration of life and legacy of service this Friday, November 8th at 6:00 PM at the Public Safety Headquarters. This is in honor of fallen Sholo Police Officer Darren Reed. As you notice, the downtown lights have been turned blue and they'll be blue until November 8th in remembrance of Officer Reed. The public is invited to attend that ceremony. Monday is Veterans Day and the VFW holds their ceremony at 10:00 AM at the Veterans Memorial at City Hall. And that event is also open to the public. And as Max indicated earlier, sometimes we have problems at our pool. And our pool pump went out. Working diligently, we found out today that the pump, the pump is going to be shipped up here in the next day or two and then we'll put it back in place. But in the meantime, we're just working on doing our annual cleaning and so we won't do that in November, we're just going to do it now and take care of that. So hopefully the, the pool will be back up shortly. And as some of you may have noticed around town, we've had some roads closed for a while, but Wilford Road's now open. They'll do some striping when it warms up just a little bit. Joe Tank Road was paved. We're doing some cleanup and drainage work there, but that road is also paved. Savage Sewer Phase One project has been installed along Whipple Ranch Elementary and they're working along the softball field. So we thank everyone for their patience while those projects were completed. Thank you.
Thank you for your report, Mr. Brown. This brings us to scheduling of meetings. Are there any meetings to be mentioned at this time? See no further business, I adjourn this meeting.